I'm going to do it for one job.
I'll get him a P forty five any second now.
Yeah, but we weren't too sure about the finger notation.
Tonight's resources meeting everybody. And do we have any members of the public here today? Thank you very much. And is there any apologies, no apologies, thank you very much. Is there any declarations? Anything? Minutes of the last meeting.
Agreed.
Minutes of the communications strategy group, two sets of those, our group of council. We happy with that?
Okay, we do agree.
There is the budget, item five, five point one, the income expenditure report and summary for next day. So as always, I'll go by the numbers in the top left up here now, so it's going to be four twenty four. Anything, anything on each page just when you have it, please. Page five. Page six. Seven. Page eight. Nine. Yeah. Yeah. One zero nine three on page nine. But those are income that's good because that just gets regenerated back into that, which is nice.
Skateboard event as well.
Yeah.
They all rose more than we anticipated.
Yeah.
Can we recall our thanks to the town centre manager who organised those events and congratulate her on the success of it, please?
Yeah, I think we did in TC, they, but anyway, we did it as well.
Yeah, that was without any figures in front of us.
Yeah. Yeah, she did a stern job. I was doing the team. Thanks, Tom. Page eleven. Page twelve. Robin.
Not that it's an issue, yeah, but we were told that we didn't need budget for twinning. And so we rolled that budget. We had that discussion, didn't we, when they came to the meeting and said that twinning with, where was it, Lake Como or something? I can't remember what the place was.
Italy.
Italy, yeah. Was it Lake Como? I don't know.
It's just a bit of Italy.
Bit of Italy, wasn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, my geography's only been there once. No, I just see that, but we just note that we had, you know, for information, if you know, there is money in the budget in earmark reserves, but we were told that there wouldn't be any expense with that. And we should keep that in earmark reserves because we have two other twinning organisation events which may fall upon that money's round to this, I think. Note that it's there.
Okay. Okay, index B. There's the left girl. Page thirteen. Page fourteen. This is so nice to see a lot of local shops listed on here, which is good for the office to keep in mind and keep the money in the town. Okay.
You say about local shops and we thought that the team were out doing the shopping Saturday event in all that weather at the weekend and they look perished. You know, so they were out there doing what they were doing in the old jail. It's not the warmest place in the world, the old jail when it's cold.
Yeah. All right, page fifteen. Okay. Item five point three, we've got a report from the town clerk. And that is a report and also an appendix D. So the budget twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six. And any recommendation, have you discussed and agreed to send resource budget to precept on thirty January? Okay.
The proposal will agree, the recommend back.
John.
We've been discussing this before the meeting. I'd like to propose that a line is created for this committee for the equality and upwards to your inclusion working group. That has some monies in which they can draw on by this committee. Because right now it has zero access to money and if it wants to announce it in the Black History Month display next October, there is no money anywhere for them to have. And it just struck me that if there was a line on here, I don't know, maybe with a couple of hundred quid or something, that would just mean that it just gives a bit of bounce to that committee to do some of its work. I don't know whether I propose that formally under our planning orders, but if we can, then I'd like to suggest that we do that.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's a reasonable request and I'd support creating a line for it and perhaps put the gesture for lower figure of two hundred pounds in there. And and then see where it goes from there because John is right, we haven't got anywhere really. We recognise that we were going to support these events and we haven't got anywhere which has identified that we've actually got a budget line. So it's not an unreasonable request. And see where it sits thereafter because there's no time otherwise to actually do anything about it. Because it hasn't been on any of the agenda budgets to the best of my knowledge. So if we find out after the meeting it is budgeted somewhere else in this case, that's excellent news.
So if you still members information because ECDI is a working group, they legally can't have a budget and cannot make any expenditure decisions. However, this, I can't think of a reason why this committee couldn't hold a budget for them. But they would have to on each occasion make a request to this committee to do so, to spend some money before they made it. Because they can't make their own decision for expenditure. I would suggest that if members want to vote for that amendment, that it should include a recommendation to full council, but that's the case because ECDI is full council's working group. And then if I find between now and then that it's not feasible for us to operate that well, put a report to full council to that effect.
Yeah, it sounds reasonable, John.
I think it says, I mean, obviously having it probably pretty sensitive again. It's making slow progress. I think having this written into the budget would give it just a, the committee as a whole, a bit more confidence. It's a difficult thing to really explain, but it just needs a bit of position, as it were, and it feels a bit lost as a working group. And this will help it find its feet a bit more, I think.
Okay, thank you.
And yes. So there is of course currently the opportunity or the possibility for that working group, it's not a committee, and I think it's important to bear that in mind, for that working group to ask for money out of the reserves from full council. It has done this before. I do however agree that having a line against it with a relatively modest sum would give a little bit of planning certainty to that working group that if they decided they just needed a little bit of printing or again, for another black lie, uh, uh, Black History Month display, then they would come, or that working group would come to full council, presumably, or actually for resources to ask for that with the confidence that the money is there. So therefore I would support that if that is legally feasible that we can do that.
Okay. All right, so we're pleased on the table, it's been seconded by Robin. That a line is created to have a small budget line for the ECDI, no, it's EC, yeah, yeah. Working group of two hundred pounds.
Yeah.
Members happy with that?
Yeah.
And we'll instruct Steve to go away and find out whether they would then come to us to ask for any money to all council. Okay, I think it's hoped that to come, we don't hear.
I would suggest that, well, if it comes under full council, that working group. If this committee is going to hold the budget, then it seems feasible that perhaps the working group could ask, oh, if the full council, this and taking this committee's permission to, because it's your, it would be your budget. So I don't want to take away from this committee that full council, so you spend, so it's on your line. But I think this committee needs to, if this is an amendment, this committee would need to make a recommendation to full council.
Yeah.
For you to hold that budget line.
Okay. All right, so members happy with that? All right, let's go to the vote then. There is an agreement for the amendment we're talking about. That is unanimous. And then if you vote on the recommendation with the amendment, who is in favour? That's unanimous, thank you very much. Okay. Right, so now we're on to bump front side, item six, Ben has none. Item seven, it's wise to pay months. Then we've got a payment of six hundred and eighty pound forty p as many road signs. And five hundred and forty pounds if even that was pop technologies to fix the sewage pump at the toilets. And seven hundred and fifty pounds was to sound and light eyes to secure a ceiling. Okay, so we happy to note those?
Yeah.
Thank you. Item eight, we've got the auditor's report. So appendix D, we've got the auditor's letter. We've already said this part.
No, true.
Yeah, happy to note, okay, thank you. And we've got the observation and our first response on appendix E. Robin.
Happy to note them, Chair, but if there's any actions bringing through another meeting. And I don't know if there is anything in there, it sort of says high medium, like most audit reports, it's just that it may be Steve, as the compliance officer might find there's something in there we need to actually bring forward to change, in which case we'll do it then.
Or the actions have either been noted that they've been done or in the process of being put on the action is to do.
Okay, thank you. So members happy to note this.
Yeah, no chance.
Thank you. And the next F is the internal auditor summary. We happy to note that. Can we just say thank you to the office, I've admitted for their work. Because any auditor always brings a little bit of stress wherever they go, so we've been at our thanks. Right, John, let's stand up then, Robin.
I was just to do what you just did, just to say thanks for the start of goal. Because clearly it is stressful and good result.
Yeah, thanks, John. Uh, Robin.
I think we ought to be grateful that we are in the process of our accounts being audited biannually. Some places are still waiting for their audits for counts over years. So where at least our accounts are in order annually, which is a really good thing to be and be audited and others based it on. But fortunately for various reasons, audits nationally are far behind in authorities. There are reasons to that, but at least keeping our audit date, which is a public record and it allows people to actually see that the council's being run properly. So that's a good thing.
Absolutely. Okay, item nine. So reports about fidelity insurance and increase to two million.
Yeah.
Me too.
Yeah.
I know, really.
Thank you. Item ten, motion from councillor Davies, do you want to speak on this front?
That's all right, Chair.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. And so I think it speaks for itself really. I propose that since we're close in the office, we're at high level due to the neighbourhood plan and other large projects, together with other staffing changes that we have encountered over the past twelve months, this committee instructs the town clerk to take steps to identify any skills or manpower shortages that currently exist and take necessary steps and food accordingly. This measure will be to add to our already talented workforce. And we all know around this table, the issues that we had during the last twelve months with staff moving on or not being able to continue to do their work for whatever reason. And we gained, we lost three and gained two, I believe, during the twelve months. So therefore I propose that we ask the town clerk to take on this piece of work.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, yeah. I would be happy to second it.
Thank you.
And if I may speak to it. I think it's also important to consider the workload in the office. We are growing town. We have taken on some very substantial pieces of work. If we want to continue serving the town of Buckingham in the way that we have done as it grows, as more challenging projects come along, there needs to be the staff base to do this. We feel that with the very, so it's not just a question of making sure that it's the right mix of staff, of which of course there is, or mix of skills, which there is of course an opportunity to review because there will be certain replacements of staff that are necessary. And we have a report later in confidential, which I'm obviously not prefacing here. But there is also a sense that quite possibly we may need a little bit of extra help in the future. And so this is something that I think as a council, we should consider, we need our office to do the things that we want to achieve as a council. They cannot do this if they haven't got the staffing necessary to do that.
Thank you. All right, so I had Robin, as I mentioned, John.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know what order.
I'm happy to go after. What I will say is, Chair, that I think that the chairman of the committees have looked at the out turns and in turns of what's going on in the office. Been there, it's been a recognition and a concern expressed about that. And I'm very grateful for the motion coming forward. I'm grateful for it being seconded. Think not to do this would be wrong. As was stated by the proposer, we've got a gap in our employment. We also have a large amount of projects which are ongoing. And we also have a calendar which we need to meet. And we also have a growing responsibility which is coming forward. Now, this gives us the ability to actually allow the town clerk to make those decisions, to actually put in place those positions. Not to do this would leave us empty. When we would get to positions where we stagnate and we can't do what we want to do. It is obvious that we've been our staff members, various members of the office have been undertaking more work, taking up the slack and working very hard and working very lean. And if we don't support our staff in being able to have the resource to be able to do the job properly, do not be surprised when, when we have more problems. And one of the things that we will relieve some of the avid pressures in the office and pressures do not produce good outcomes. So this is a right decision and, and I think has been discussed avidly outside of meeting and knowing the pressures that we have managed to oblige. So I've had to support the motion in the extent that it is. And leave it for a report to come back on how we action to that motion and which will be the next stage.
Thank you. So as I, John Howard, then Martin.
Thank you very much, Chair. While I do not oppose recruitment generally, I think what we are faced with here is quite open ended. Obviously, both council, all councils have spoken. And so understanding that there's an apparent need for support for our staff. Now, what this support actually is, nobody has specified. And also what skill set we're seeking is not there. Now, my worry is, I do recall that there was a task given for the town clerk to do an audit, a staff audit. I do remember that discussion and that.
Yeah, it's something I put on, so that we take new staff, they pay.
Correct.
Yes.
And I can't, it might have been brought back, but I cannot really connect us discussing that to try and identify where these gaps are, what particular areas of skills this gap is, and who we're going to recruit to then fill that gap. But to just give an open ticket to go and employ, you know, more staff without directly stating what areas, is it planning? Because I can see reference to the neighbourhood plan. Is it planning? Is it environmental? You know, is it admin? We're not clear whether this shortage of support is needed. I think that's what needs to be made clear to this committee. I'm not sure if Steve could give us some clarity around, because Robin did, so councillor stopped to say that then discussions are telling me that I'm not privy to the discussions.
It's a chairman's meeting, so it was like the board chairs.
Yeah, I understand, I'm not privy to the discussion.
And I appreciate that.
So if we, if we as a committee can be, you know, brought to speak, brought on to speak to what's been discussed and where these challenges are, then we might better understand the motion. But as it is now, I will struggle to just, you know, impart the part to employ staff when I'm not sure what exactly we're employing them for and what skill sets we're seeking with this new recruitment.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
If I may, I don't want to speak on behalf of the proposer of the motion, but the first part of the motion is for the town clerk to go away and take steps to identify the skills and shortages. So obviously until she's done that, the second half of the motion can't really happen, I would suggest. So that's members to just fine.
That's all right, Roger, as well.
I just quickly come back on that.
Of course.
Yes. If it's to identify, that's already, that's already been set and we haven't had a thought about that.
No, sorry.
No. No, if, if, if that's what is being sought, then I think that's fine. You know, I'm happy for the town clerk to go and identify. But if you look at the latest stage or later phrase then, it talks about taking necessary steps to recruit accordingly. So that means we will not, she will not come back to us to let us know what the skills sets are, to let us know how many staff are required. We're talking about skills, talking about numbers. You know, these are things that are quite vague. So yes, if the motion is amended to reflect only the identification of this skill set and the number, that's fine. But if we're going to go as far as taking necessary steps to recruit, I think that's why I have a concern, Chair.
I can see how that comes to be read as well. So let's go to John Howard, Fran and then Robin.
Martin.
Martin, sorry, who is, was it John then Martin, it was John then Martin. John.
Okay, thank you. And I'd support the motion generally.
Yeah.
I think I would say the town clerk should be doing this.
Yeah.
In any case.
No. No.
We just, sorry, I'm sorry, we don't know that, do we? We know that the town clerk is not looking at her staff team and thinking all the time about their capacity and skills and where to go. I would, I would challenge that assumption that she's not doing that. Because I think that would be a derogation of her position if she, if you're saying the town clerk's not doing that. Then I, I would severely criticise anybody suggesting town clerk's not doing the job. Seriously.
Quite a point of order, quite of order.
Robin, if you could stop staring across the table one, please.
I also just, another point that was raised minutes ago, I'm a little bit disturbed by this idea that there is a committee of the chairs of the committee, of the committee chairs. We have no such structure within our town council. What on earth is that body actually doing? Where are they meeting? What's the agenda? How is that transpired? When are decisions being made? What's being discussed? That's not part of how this town council runs. We run an open forum where everything's discussed by all committee members and indeed by full council. So I don't agree with that happening. I don't like the sound of that very much at all. Earlier, I would say what's missing from this motion is strategy. Because the whole point of at least any staffing structure should be about form, following function. What are we here to do as a town council? Have we got clear objectives, clear targets and we have some sense of direction? Now, we can do our best to set that now, but we are, we are the dying embers of this particular town council and there's going to be elections next May, less than six months away. So I think that there's a real need to think about what are we here to do? And then forward a staff team around that. Now, obviously that would carry on doing, you know, various things that we've already always done. But I think we need to have another good look at that when the new councillors elected in May. And then have a look at the staffing structure as well. We have an opportunity, there are staffing movements happening that's giving us a bit of flex that the town clerk and us can work together and find the optimum mix and someone. I don't think, I mean, that this is a signing of blank cheque because there is no blank cheque, there's a budget of what we actually agree. If, if the, you know, we can't just suddenly magic money out of nowhere and create another staff post unless we find that's agreed by, by full council. I'd also take issue with the word manpower. Come on, we're a council, we're, people are actually women. Let me not use words like manpower anymore. Let's talk about staffing capacity. We don't talk about words like manpower. They were out in the nineteen seventies. So I suggest that we have that amended and take the staffing capacity as well.
Thank you, Martin.
Well, thank you. While I'm in agreement with the essence of this, I thank councillor Davies for putting this on the agenda because without it, we can't have this very debate that we're having now. And I think we do need to have the debate, although like some others, I have, you know, because the wording has been put in front of us, I have some not concerns, doubts, issues, somewhere along that line. For instance, I do think that the town clerk should be doing this on a yearly basis and that process may not have kicked in yet. That doesn't mean to say we can't come in and ask for that process to be accelerated because of something that's happened and we want some better arrangement within the office. There's also not a timescale on this, which I think we also need, not only for us, but for the town clerk as well. You know, is it a month? Is it to the end of the, you know, when the new precept starts, et cetera? So that needs to happen. Yeah, so although I think we need to do, as always, look inwardly and around our staffing issues, I think there are maybe some better ways of wording it.
Well, thank you very much. I wish.
At a time when most organisations and councils are going to cut back on their staffing in order to reduce costs, I had problems in agreeing to this without a proper look at how the organisation goes within this council. We are not bound to restrict our precept, we can put it up to how much we like. We're already the second highest precepted council in Buckinghamshire and parish council in Buckinghamshire. And parish council in Buckinghamshire. I would be happy with this, providing it was done properly. And a report comes back to this committee, together with the cost structure of how much extra is going to cost to employ. Uh another person. What it says here is necessary steps to recruit accordingly. Well, that's open. You can record anybody you like, whatever money you like, and there's no restriction on it. It was mentioned about the chair in this meeting, I don't have a problem with that. Because many years ago, we used to have a chair and a committee, which worked very well, but this council decided to abolish it. Uh I'm glad to see it's come back, because there are some things which can be talked about, which don't have to come to committee. Um so as the wording stands, you're not so afraid of it.
Thank you. Fran, Robin and the mayor.
Yeah, Laura, I'm just gonna, that's all right, the mayor.
I guess, yeah, she's.
Oh, okay.
Wants me to go first.
Is that what you're popping as well then?
Definitely.
I hear everything that's being said around the table.
Yeah.
I understand where people are coming from. I uh would propose an amendment. And that goes, um. I propose, so it is proposed that since workloads in the office are at a high level due to the neighbourhood plan and other large projects. Together with other staffing changes we have encountered over the past twelve months. This committee instructs the town clerk to take steps to identify any skills. Or.
Workforce.
Workforce shortages that currently exist and come back to full council with a report on this.
Would it be full council or would it be resources?
Full council. That's a good question.
Full council.
Full council it should be.
In two months, that's.
One minute, Robin. Steve, do you have a view on that? Sorry.
Um. I, I don't particularly um on whether it's full council or, or resources. Um if I may have a moment to, to think about that, what I would add is that actual members already have got in mind that there is a. Report later on the agenda and confidential with the outcome of items on that may influence. Um what, what the plot establishes, um but also the annual staff appraisals are currently in progress.
Yeah.
Uh which do include a, a identification of a skill, of skills gaps and training required and so forth. Um which again will also be taken into account by the clerk. Um I, I am aware that, that the clerk is uh waiting for some of these things to fall into place before she continues with her. Her ongoing review anyway.
Okay, thank you. So um Fran, would you be happy for the addition?
Quite happy with, with Anya's.
And Robin as the, like, second to.
I'm quite happy with the amendment.
Right, so I've done, so Fran now, then Robin.
Um, but I'm. I was gonna wait, Anthony hasn't actually spoken on it.
Well, you're all right.
Um, well, I'm very grateful for the um. Um that people are interested enough to um, the, the reason that. This is on the agenda is because committee chairs have responsibilities. And meet officers on, which is their duty to do so on a regular basis. When it is identified that there is a known pressure within the office, which is preventing the success. And progression of things and delaying things, and we have, which has been discussed in confidential, so we won't do all the confidential stuff. All these issues have been known to this committee. The idea that there was a staffing review going to go place is. Partially correct, but not totally correct, because the review hasn't been prevented. But because that known pressure is. Uh a residual strain on the staff and the workforce and that it was discussed. Along with many other things, which won't be discussed today, about how we make it function. Now, the motion here today amended allows the staff and the town clerk to do that. The town clerk is constantly reviewing these things. And that conversation has been had privately, separately with other people and not jointly with the town clerk. So I'm confident that the town clerk has got a handle on what she needs to do. What she can't do. Is until she's produced a report on the staff in which, because of the pressures in the office, because of the amount of time that she's having to spend. Doing this recruitment, um um sickness, um staffing issues, it's not allowed the town clerk to produce that report. The reason the motion helps is it allows a decision to be made um taken by the members. And that can be, be supported, not supported. If you don't support, you have to live with the consequences not supporting it. And um so. And I wish it being amended um around the pronouns and the other things, it does very much fulfill the obligations of. The request to have a staffing review. Not, not that we couldn't do a staffing review, but we are in a position. And if we don't make a decision this side of the precept meeting. It won't allow the town clerk to actually put a budget forward. Even if you put a budget forward to do something. You still have the chance at the precept meeting to actually say, well, I don't agree with that line in the budget. And so um it is not doing nothing more than. And allowing the town clerk to make an immediate plan. If we don't, you have to be aware that what might happen is. We fail to achieve something, something doesn't happen and whatever, you'll have to take ownership of the consequences of that at a later date. Um now, I, I'm, you know, I'm not quite finished. Um other people come back several times. So I'm just making, laying it out bare and raw for you. And, and the reason um that it's here is. The very reason it's been said by people. So I'm happy to hear what the proposer says. I was also happy to hear um councillor Anthony Raski, who hasn't spoken on it yet, and, and Braylon, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Um may I through you ask for advice and information? Um would it be possible for us to possibly through suspension of standing orders? Park this um proposal temporarily for the moment. Go to confidential and look at the information in confidential, which appears to have some bearing on it. And then return to this once we've been appraised of the information.
And to see.
Sorry to throw you a curve there, Steve.
Well, I'd certainly want to, you know, the reason I've mentioned the, the confidential report coming up is that I think it does have a bearing on. On, on, on this motion. Um. It may be advantageous to do it the other way around and um to delay a decision on this. Until we go into confidential or finish the rest of the business. Um. But the decision on this motion will, will have to be made in um i- in the open, because it's on the open agenda.
No, I accept.
Um. I think it would be wise to um. Pursue a decision on this until we've finished the remainder of the open agenda, then go into confidential and do that, those items. Um and then we have to open it back up for um a decision on this motion. My initial thoughts, but I'm open to offers.
Just, can I help, Anthony?
Go on.
No, I, I, I've asked my question and I'm waiting to see the outcome of the points that Steve's made, really.
Okay, thank you.
It's possible that the members may wish to make an amendment simply to ask the clerk to identify the s- the skills and shortages. Uh and leave it there. I mean, she is doing that anyway.
Yeah. No, no. It's a state talk, please.
She is doing that anyway in terms of the skills gap, because that's done in the annual um appraisals. But she's also doing it, um, but she's also waiting for the outcome of the items during the confidential report. Um. Recruitment is a um different matter, of course, because we need to um await till the, the outcome of the items in the. In the different confidential report. That's an, that's an alternative to um, uh to parking this, is to make an amendment to um. Um wait for a report and then go after that.
Okay, Fran, may I, John, Fran?
Okay, so my point is on this, I'm still with my right to speak um on my motion. And afterwards, my point on this is that this is separate. Whilst it's, it, it could possibly seem, be seen to be running alongside the motion that's in confidential. Or the report that's in confidential, it is not the same thing. And therefore, if, if the clerk had felt that it needed to be, be um looked at alongside the reporting confidential. Then the clerk would have taken a decision, I'm sure, to put my motion into confidential. Not run it on the, on the full agenda. I would be very, very much opposed to it um going. After the confidential. I think we need to, need to sort it out now.
Okay, and I take the other point on board. I found at the meeting what Ade was recollecting. Um it was a motion that I had put on um a meeting from. Um but it was put in the confidential, so it wasn't discussed out in the open, so I'm not going to discuss it here now. Um but it was from the second of September meeting. Um. So that was trying to address some issues, but like I said, we've discussed that and that's very confidential. So the mayor and then John.
I have proposed an amendment, which now merely, we are. After this discussion, where we are asking the town clerk to identify not just skills gaps, but also. What shortages there may be in the level of the workforce, not just the composition of the workforce and to come back. To um either this committee or full council as directed, I think, by the uh.
Yeah.
By the clerk.
Yeah.
By uh Steve in the, in his capacity as the clerk to this committee, I'm happy to take advice on this one. I do not see that we need to have discussed the r- report in the confidential in order to make. This decision, this is now merely sta- um a motion to set the ball. Rolling so we can have a discussion about staffing levels. And the possible end of that discussion or outcome is entirely open at this stage. But I would reiterate the point that I think we need to have that conversation and for that we need to have the report. So therefore, I would really quite like if we could put the amendment to the motion to the vote, please.
Thanks, thank you. One last point, John, and I've got to go.
Okay, well, I support the amendment, I support the motion as a whole, I think Fran's right, it's separate and different to the, the matter in the. It wasn't linked to the matter in the confidential session.
Yeah.
And it's basically a facility motion to make something, you know, to, to, to give some direction. And say that all needs to happen, but it's not actually determining anything in the future, other than it needs to be locked down, basically.
Yeah.
So I think, I mean, I would say I'm in agreement, Anya, let's, let's go to a vote, you know, let's go to the, the motion.
I'm really ready to go to the vote.
Well, it comes back as a proposal of the, of the motion. Um what I'd like to say is that I've heard what everybody said, I can understand, um. The wording may not have been particularly um correct or succinct or, or whatever, um. This is why we debate things, this is, this is, this is why we sit around this table. Um otherwise, what's the point of, of, of us being here at all? Um it is not our job to micromanage the office, that is Claire's job. So it is not up to us to decide what um staffing she needs in her office. Where the gaps are, it is up to us to say yea or nay to the finance of it.
Yeah.
And um on that basis, I will ask for a recorded vote on both the amendment to the motion and the um. And the other vote.
Right, thank you.
I'm not going to change any more. So only the proposer of the motion who can actually withdraw the motion or change it. Um with the agreement. So if the amendment is put.
It's been, it's been.
No, no, what I'm saying is that you would have to agree.
Yeah.
The motion being altered, would you have?
Yeah.
But equally, you could not have it moved into confidential unless you agreed to it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Howard, sorry, I was.
Are you just talking?
Yeah, yeah.
And we just have that read at the beginning, please.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Thank you.
Could you mind reading back the motion which includes the amendment? Thank you. I propose that since workplaces in the office are at a high level due to the neighbourhood plan. And other large projects, together with the other staff changes we have encountered over the past twelve months. This committee instructs the town clerk to identify any skills or workforce shortages that currently exist. And we report back to full council. Wasn't it resources or full council?
Council. I think, I said. To the appropriate committee, to the appropriate committee. Can we, can we change it to the appropriate committee?
Sean, Steve wasn't sure either, so I'd rather. Yeah. Alright, so and we're gonna have recorded votes.
Can we, can we shift the, my, the last line to add to our already talented workforce, please?
So the last line is included.
Um no, hang on, that was not my amendment. No.
Okay, alright, then.
I think that might be prejudiced in the outcome.
Yeah, so they, and it's recorded vote, so those who think.
So maybe just before we first, I would ask, I think the motion was seconded by.
Um.
Yeah, so if there's an amendment, can I just ask that the secondaries happy through it?
We're gonna check, yeah, I want you to check.
Yeah, somebody need to.
I heard that Fran was, but I just wanted to make sure that the second.
Yeah.
My amendment, so. Has the amendment been seconded?
So many times, I just want to check.
No, I'm pretty sure that's Steve.
Check. Point of order, Chair, has it? Sorry, I'm just trying to make sure we do things properly here. Has somebody seconded the amendment?
I'll second it.
I'll second it. Okay, thank you.
I'll second it. Fran, I'll say this bit clean, I'll second it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we have it, can we have it read again, so that we're all done now, there's no more bits and bobs? Yeah, I'd like to hear it one more time, please. I, I, to be fair, I would like clarity on that, please.
Okay. Okay, I propose that since workplaces in the office are at a high level due to the neighbourhood plan. And other large projects, together with the other staff and changes we have encountered over the past twelve months. This committee instructs the town clerk to identify any skills or workfo- work. Workforce shortages that currently exist and report back to the appropriate committee. Yeah?
Yeah.
Thank you. So those in favour of the amendment, please vote now. That is unanimous.
So it's recorded vote.
Does it make a difference?
It's unanimous.
It's still unanimous. Does it make a difference?
Yeah, so I can do graduate all them, thank you. And now on the actual motion, those in favour of the motion, please show.
As amended.
As amended, as amended, and it's recorded vote. So that is also unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Fran. Thank you, Ma'am, for your contributions, everybody else, obviously. Okay, so item eleven, updates from representatives of the localities. And so if you've got anything they'd like to report on, that is, anything of interest. Um that, item twelve, actual report.
No, 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 I'm just looking at Owen, I, 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 I could go on for.
You look too many, could some after, sorry.
I know why I didn't speak, because there's so much of interest, it doesn't actually relate to this authority.
Okay, fair enough. Alright, thank you. And I just waited a little bit longer to see.
I loved it.
Oh, item twelve, actual report, and it's G. No, do not do. Thank you. Uh let's sweep back up to the top. Um, right, town announcements, I don't have any. Into, don't next meeting into the new year, so happy Christmas.
Happy mid-year.
Happy New Year. Yep. Uh right, our members, happy you go into the second year. Yep. Uh right, our members, happy you go into part the second.
Yeah.
Happy, happy, yeah.
We have both.